Thank you. All right, we'll reconvene this budget work session. Shelby, when we scheduled today's session, we did not check in with Shelby to see whether or not she was available today, and she is not. So we'll have to just take good notes, and she'll have to go back and watch for any changes that we make if she's logging things in. I guess Kevin, you are first up.
Is that okay?
Yes. Did you make me co-host while you're sitting up here, since I don't?
Christina is.
She is, okay. Okay, just, I didn't realize she was.
Yeah, she should be.
Thank you. I just didn't want to leave Zoom unattended. We haven't had a Zoom bomber in a while, but we just don't want to take any chances.
Is that a Zoom bomber?
No, we haven't had a Zoom bomber in a while, but we don't want to take any chances. Now that we've jinxed ourselves.
Exactly.
Okay. IT is on page 12. Thank you.
Sorry, is that easy?
Yep.
Wow, open right there. It sounds like something.
Pretty good. All right, so for Kevin, you have page 12 and page 13. He has the detail for it.
Oh, the item?
Yeah. And I have to say, if any department head in the town does zero-based budgeting, this is an example of zero-based budgeting. Thank you, Kevin. Did anyone have any questions for Kevin? Kevin, if you want to just take a minute to talk about what you're trying to accomplish this next year with your budget?
Pretty much that as well than most odd years. Our increases are mainly just the typical subscription increases that we deal with every year. As I say, the maintenance budget is pretty much set by whatever we're signed up for. We get the numbers from either the vendors we deal with directly or through Ed, and he gives us the numbers. So that pretty much fills that out. For anybody that doesn't know, we still work with Easton Computers as a secondary IT for... I still throw ideas against them, and we still discuss things. They get, you know, we still have meetings, you know, usually once a month, just to discuss certain things, whether like security issues, whatnot. Also, anytime that I go away, which is rare, but when I do go away, they're tend to leave on call for, you know, physical visits if anything needs to happen in that period of time. So that's... And they still manage like a lot of the backups and a lot of the alerts and stuff, and obviously alerting me if anything comes up in their systems that, you know, of any kind of issues. So that's why they're still technically in the fold.
What is that, what is that contract, Kevin?
What do you mean?
With Easton Computer?
That's what that's for. What, how much is it?
How much is it?
Oh, it's a dynamized list.
Where is it?
It's the third one down, it says EEC Labor. And that's went from 13 to 30 to increase it to 14.5 this year. Which I feel is reasonable.
Where's the line item, I'm sorry?
Under the maintenance budget, the hard one down, it says EEC Labor.
Like the third and fourth, on page 12, the media, two lines for Christina and Coco. What does that mean exactly? Media?
Well, they're involved in the media department because they handle a lot of stuff with the website. They handle the YouTube channel as far as putting meeting videos on there. So they're part of the media department, so they get some of their salary from that line.
Got it. And there was no overtime before, but now there is overtime?
Kevin put it in, I checked it out.
Okay.
It was in there, we never really utilized it. Christina mentioned that she wanted to keep it in, but honestly, most times if anybody had to cover, like Jessica or whatever, had to cover for something, it didn't, the overtime didn't have to come out of our line. I think she was paid by one of the committees or something like that at one point that she covered. It just, it wasn't, we didn't, I didn't, we never used it. So I didn't feel we, there was a need to use it. Me personally, I just work all the time, so it's not really like I'm looking for overtime for any time I'm doing anything extra, because I'm usually doing something anyway.
Okay. I found that plug again, but then it disappeared again.
I had replaced it anyway, it's not that big a little while, they're not that expensive. The equipment lines, that's pretty much the same as it's always been when it comes to, we generally replace 10 computers every year. Copier prices, they're no longer $5,000, so we had to actually buy two this year, and they were, they were just shy of $8,000, so I bumped that line out. Server's kind of the same, it's six. And then the rest of the stuff, kind of as is. We are looking to do more cameras and security-related stuff in the next year, so that's where... So we kind of keep that $8,000 in there for that. We're looking to do the EMS over, we're looking to add more here, so it's going to be quite a bit more security coverage as far as cameras go, coming in '26.
EPS batteries, those are backup batteries?
Those are all the battery backups, batteries are kind of expendable items, and we constantly have to stock up on... It's a combination of the batteries and the units themselves, because the units go bad, you know, eventually.
I remember that.
Nobody likes it when they start beeping at them constantly, so we try to keep them up to date. So generally, they're also on like a five-year plan. The batteries every year, and the units every five years.
Kevin, you didn't have a narrative in here, could you maybe... narrate some different departments in terms of what happened this year? Things you got, your power outage, maybe just, I know you had new equipment and new installations and stuff like that. Could you just give a little?
This year or just in general?
Yep.
It's pretty much, the big ticket item this year was we're coming up, it's next month on the Windows 11. Basically, Windows 10 cutoff as of October 9th, I think. We no longer get updates for Windows 10, so we had to have all our machines ready to have Windows 11 on them. And a lot of our hardware was out of date and could not take Windows 11, so that was the big push this year, was to install, update. I think I updated 12 computers this year between, not only like for individual users, but all like the temporary, all the low-use situations, like the public computer at the assessor's office and the evidence computer, PD, all of them. So between recycling some of the old stuff that was still capable of Windows 11 and installing new computers, that was the big, that was my main mission this year, was to be ready for that, which we are, we have one machine to do, which is Michelle. I was holding out for her at the justice court because she was saying she was leaving, but I told her her decision has to be made next week, because that's the end of the line for her computer, so I'll have to upgrade. I have the computer, it's ready to go, it just needs to be put into play. We had our server upgrade, it was for Town Hall this year. We did do a consolidation where we originally had two individual server boxes in the server room, and we consolidated it to one, simplified it, we put a cabinet in there, get all the equipment off of the shelf in there, starting to clean things up, make things a little more organized in that server room. eventual goal is I would love to have that server live in the back of the building apartment in the archive area, but for now, it's fine where it is. We did do some camera upgrades this year, we have two in the parking lot of, back in the building apartment, covering the parking lot of Town Hall. And we've upgraded the cameras over at the assessor's office that were pre-existing into the current system that we use. I don't think we did any other cameras, I think that was the only for camera stuff. I mean, there's still some more for this year to do, mainly because the... My main priority was the computer upgrades. And then coming in the next few months, potentially, at the PD, we were scheduling to start to rewire the police department for a, to get rid of the old, again, security systems and wire it for a more modern camera security system. So that's upcoming. Basically, I was waiting till after the October cutoff of Windows 10 to start tackling that project. Other than that, I'm trying to think of what else besides the typical day-to-day stuff, but that was the...
That was, no, you were talking about last year, what you did this past year, correct?
Yeah, that was all this past year. And going into next year is kind of falling back on the, you know, we won't have the computer upgrades other than the typical 10 computers that we normally do every year. We generally try to keep the computers on a five-year plan, servers and computers, so every five years the equipment gets replaced. So that's, that's just a general, where we do, you know, with that, just to kind of keep the equipment fresh. And it helped us in this situation, so with, you never know when Microsoft is going to decide, just like Windows 10 or 11 or whatnot, that, you know, we have to be upgraded to a certain point. And in this particular case, we were, we didn't have to overspend or buy any real extra amount of computers that we normally do, just a little bit, to keep on schedule, to be ready for the Windows 11 change. So it worked out in that regard. And then we go, and this year we had two copiers. We generally don't have two copiers, but we got a little bit of money from a grant for the justice court, so we replaced two copiers for PD and the justice court this year. Usually, we only do one a year, but in this case, the one, they expired, they were end of life, and they were no longer supported with their service contract, so we kind of were forced to...
So we leased no copy, copiers?
We don't lease them, we buy them outright, yeah. And then we have, then there's a, there's a contract, it used to be a prepaid contract, but now you just pay per print. So it's like a certain amount of cents per print, I forget what exactly it is.
That's the contract.
That, yeah, that's the contract. You used to, in the old days, you used to like prepay like 2,000 or 3,000 upfront, and then that was like your service contract, but they did away with that. So it's still a service contract, but it's literally per print. So it's only, you only pay, you know, for the service and the consumables of the printers, all included in that per-print price. It ends up being about the awash, because instead of paying the 3,000 upfront, you're just paying it as you go. So, and that caught a couple people off guard, it's like, oh, what's our service contract for the copier now? I was like, it's just per print, like it's not, like you don't pay an upfront yearly cost on it anymore. But yes, we don't generally, traditionally, we have not leased them, we buy them.
What do they, I mean, so what would a charge per cop be, just out of curiosity?
I think it's like, it's fractions of a cent. It's, I forget, it's like .0065 or something like that, it's a pretty low number. And depending on if you have a color, black and white, the color's obviously a little bit more than the black and whites. But it distinguishes between that, because there's a monitoring system that connects to all the copiers, and that's what they go by.
And the recycling of equipment, how do you, I know you had some equipment you were, I forgot the expression you used, but it's excessive.
Yeah, well, we have a lot of, we tend to, we try to recycle as much as we can, but in this particular case, as far as computers go, with the Windows 11 deal, they were pretty much useless, those computers, because as of October, they can no longer be used as far as us or anybody really, because they will no longer, they cannot have Windows 11 installed on them. They put a hardware cutoff on the machines for Windows 11, so the large number of machines that are normally, that we, what's the word?
Excess.
Excess. Is because we, they were no longer useful. The ones that could take 11, we usually, I usually would hold on to for like worst-case scenarios, if someone needs one swapping out, or instead of putting brand-new computers in, say, like the public computer or the evidence computer that don't get used very often, I use the recycled one in those locations. So I try to, in this particular case, I try to put new computers in the actual used locations that are, that have day-to-day use, like a day-to-day office use, and then the recycled ones go to the low priority locations.
Do they have any residual value?
This year, no, I mean, there's really...
You take them to the recycling, they have the recycling side of it?
Yeah, they get wiped as far as they remove the hard drives from them, and then they get...
That's the computer, what about the printers?
The printers, well, in this particular case, the, they were no longer supported, like similar case, so the, the, the ones we threw away this year, or looking to throw away this year, was the one old, old one from the justice, from Town Hall, which then made the building department. And it, again, was out of support, like it could no longer be, you can, according to Carr, who we deal with, was Xerox, could no longer get parts for. So, and that one, we were using it for as long as we could, and it finally failed in some way back there, and was no longer, we no longer had a contract with it. So we, so we pretty much hold on to the things to the very, very end. By the time we're done with them, they're not really usually work much.
You're in a five-year cycle now.
The copiers are not necessarily on a five-year cycle, they, some of, they, I think, some of them are like eight or nine years. Some, the copiers are the one thing, we, because they have a service contract with them, and as long as they support that service contract, then we keep them. So with the computers, we don't necessarily have that.
So you, so then, when this, this one, the service contract, and that's when you buy new copies?
That's when we would look to be buying a new, usually we get a heads-up a year ahead of time when they're going to start to... And they're usually staggered enough where we usually can do them every year or so.
What is the average life of the printers?
I mean, the ones we just replaced, I think they were around like eight years old. But there was a time where like three of them, at the last time, were upgraded in like one year. So we, that's why we had two this year, we don't generally do that. So we've been going forward, trying to stagger them a little bit more. But as long as, as long as they're supported, as long as they're in contract, and they can get replacement parts for them, we generally hold on to them.
So you really, it's just, you have no major projects this year? I mean, meaning, what I'm saying, there's always a project, again, what I mean is that there's no like special program, it's just replacement and...
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's, yeah, like, not like when we change the phone system or anything like that, there's no, we don't, so, other than really, security cameras are really the only major, not for 25 per se, but for, even for 26, that's going to be one of our big pushes.
All the desks, is that through your department? Like all the raging desks, is that through this?
No, that usually is individual.
That's general fund?
That's usually, or they're individual departments, office stuff. That type of stuff, like if you want a special keyboard or mouse or stand-up desk or whatever, that's usually, that's usually on the individual departments, we don't generally handle that. Screens and computers and printers and cameras are usually the most things we cover.
And what is Sonic Wall?
That's our routers, that's our, that's, every, every building has one, and they have a security, so security service with them.
I just, I'm not familiar with all the things, so you can rehook down from there. I question, I'm not really familiar with it again.
Any other questions for Kevin?
Kevin, does the building department, have they received their printer?
It's going to be the death to me. No, I actually just got an email from them, because I literally email them like every week. I'm like, I'd like to get this sorted out by this year. They have received the incorrect one, that we are waiting on our refund on the one that finally got sent back. And then once we get the refund, we can go through and order the correct.
We haven't gotten the refund?
We have not gotten the...
I thought you said that we got the refund, we got a credit.
I thought we had, but Shelby would know the details.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, it was done in a way where it was on the card, but we never, I don't think we ever paid the card, or something along that line, so it's still...
Paid by credit card?
Yeah, I think it's like still on the card in some way, I don't quite remember exactly what she talked about. I don't think it's generally come out of our budget yet, I think it's still sitting on the card, wait, so we're waiting for that to get refunded, so that would, that balance would go away on the card, that was my understanding of it.
Do they have a machine that they're using now, though?
No, it's, it's the large format machine, and so they've never had one. So this was a new thing. If you don't know the history, we ordered one in February, I think it was, and they sent incorrect one. We wanted the one that could have the scan head, so they can scan the large formats, plans and stuff. And they sent the incorrect one, and I've literally been, we've been battling with them for the past seven months to try to get this thing solved. And again, they came in June, I think, finally, to retrieve it, is when it was finally picked up, and tracking showed it was delivered, and they have, according to the last email I got, they have, they have received it, and so they're, they said that they are working on the refund process, but they did not have a timeline as far as, and this was two days ago, I think, I got that email.
What's the name of the firm?
It was through CDW, but the problem with it was, is when you buy from CDW, which you buy a lot of stuff from, CDWG, not everything that you buy from them is strictly from CDW, it's, a lot of stuff is drop-shipped, and there's no way to know if it's drop-shipped or not. In this particular case, it was drop-shipped directly from HP. They refute, HP might, through this whole process, was being difficult in saying that, no, it was the correct printer, it was just not, you know, everything was fine, but we obviously sent pictures and multiple emails saying that, no, this is the incorrect printer, this is not what we ordered. And so that's where this was coming from. CDW, CDW was fighting with HP to get the printer refunded. Had it been shipped strictly from CDW, it probably would have been a non-issue, it would have been taken care of that week. But being that it was, they were, they were kind of a middleman in this.
Since it was paid by a credit card, did you put, did anybody put a credit, did it put a charge in? Or speak to the credit card company about not, not getting your, you know, all of this whole issue from the very beginning, like, you know, like I, I do them, like I remember expressing a lot of the credit card companies, if you have an issue, okay, they usually, if you say, hey, I got a problem here, I'm not paying the bill.
Yeah, no, I mean, we didn't necessarily expect this to go on this long. I mean, everything, when I first said that this is the wrong printer, and this, we need to refund it, you're like, oh, no problem, get us, you know, pack it back up, and we'll get the thing, get the label, and get it shipped out. I was told it was going to be a quick, simple process, and then it kind of stretched on. By that point, I, usually you have like 90 days to kind of work with the credit card, I believe. This is not an American Express, it's a Chase Visa, I think. So we didn't necessarily go down that avenue, I don't believe, but... I think, I think by the time it became problem, I think it was kind of a little bit late for that.
And we do business with CDW?
CDW, yeah.
Right now?
Yeah, we still deal with, I mean, I still order stuff through them, you know, I haven't ordered an HP product through them lately, but we still, we still order, like a lot of the security camera stuff, and...
The credit card charges go to CDW? They, they get paid, CW. When you, when you charge, everything is being charged to CW?
Yes, it's through CDW.
Right, so whatever happens with them is HP, that's their issue, that's not ours. So like, why wouldn't, why wouldn't they, if we're a regular vendor, then we do lots of work, why don't we put some pressure on them? And even like, there are other vendors over there than CW, why would we continue to business with them? That's the way they handle an account?
I mean, I have, this is a one-off deal, I don't, this is something that... I, I don't know, I don't necessarily have an answer for that, in the sense that I could pressure them all day long, but, and I, maybe in this particular case, the money wasn't going to CDW, it was going directly to HP, I don't know how they handle it. I don't know how, once, once it gets charged, I don't know if the money bypasses CDW and goes straight to this dropshipper for HP. And now CDW is waiting for the refund from HP, and then CDW can refund us. So I, that's, that's my only, I don't plan on doing this every year. So this is kind of a one-off deal that just, again, it's mainly because it's the size of the printer, it was done through a freight company, it's a, it comes on a pallet, you know, it's a very large device, it's not just like a laptop or whatever, where it's easy to just return, that's where this whole thing came from. Again, the most I can, I can scream at them on the phone all day long, whether, if they're not getting their money back, they're not, you know, they're not going to give us our money back.
So in essence, the building department has been without that printer that has scan capability?
Yeah, well, they never had it, this is, this is all new.
New, but again, they don't...
We have, we have one, we have a, we have a large format scanner upstairs, but it, and it can do up to 24 inches. So that does the majority, so a lot of the, I forget what size that is, ARC D or whatever, a lot of the plans that they have, they can scan if they want, a lot of the old plans that we have. But this was a 30-inch, so it could do the full-size, or 36-inch, like it's 36-inch, could do the full-size stuff. So, again, they never had this before, this was also supposed to be new this year to have this functionality. So it's not like they, something they had for 10 years, and all of a sudden they don't have. This is something that was new.
And how do you see a resolution that they do get this piece of equipment?
Well, they, there's, once, the ones were refunded, and again, they're working on, my understanding is in the email, they're working on that process. So once we're refunded, we can reorder the correct one.
I don't know why you can't reorder the other one and just deduct it from the bill. I pay it, if you're right, and everything's...
It's more, that's more of a, Shelby's the one that handles the credit card stuff, so she would know more in detail of the actual procedure and how that would be handled, because I don't handle the credit card side of things. Because she, she knows, she's aware of it or has, you know, seen it. And again, I don't, not necessarily sure we ever, maybe we did pay for it, I don't remember, I, we did...
I think we did.
So it came out of the budget, so it came out of the budget line. And the tricky part of it is, is it's technically 24 money, that's where we really want to get this sorted out this year, because it was encumbered money from 24, it wasn't even in this year's, out of this year's budget. And we couldn't just order a new one, because we weren't necessarily budgeted for $5,000 that they cost, or six, 5,500, something like that.
Can you stop squeaking your pen, please? Can you please stop squeaking your pen? It's just really high-pitched noise.
So we, it is being worked on, it hasn't been forgotten, even though it's been taking seven months, it's not something that, you know, I literally email them, and just about every week, be like, what's the update? What's going on? And they've been, I'm not necessarily happy with the situation, it's not, obviously don't want this to happen again, but it is being, it is being worked on, and is being hopefully sorted out in the next month or so.
Is there another company that you could order the printer from, instead of trying to do it the same way?
Potentially, but we, it'd be probably even more expensive, or the price would be different. And we kind of, depending on the encumbered money amount, that would all be a discussion with Shelby or whatever, to figure out. Like, one of the reasons I went through CDW is they had the best price out of all of them. They were about $1,000 or $1,500 cheaper than just about anywhere else, so that was one of the main reasons why I went there. So if we have to buy from somewhere else, we're going to be paying more.
They're also on state contract?
Yes. So that's part of it that makes it easy with CDW, is they're always, pretty much, they buy... they buy on state contracts, so they don't, you could just buy it, not worry about anything else, but usually, they, again, they were a good bit more cheaper on their price, so, and we have been agreed upon that price, so when the, even if the price had gone up over this year, if we reorder from them, it would be the same price. And I basically, once it gets shipped out and shows up here, I'm going to instruct the freight company that I will be going into the truck, and I will be examining the printer before it leaves the truck, to make sure it is the correct model.
This just seems ridiculous.
It is.
That this is going on for this year, and, and there's no resolution to it. I mean, honestly, I don't understand, I don't understand.
Shit happens. Pretty much, I mean, Kevin's been on it, Shelby's been on it. I offered to call the company, it, it would help, but Kevin's on it.
Well, I think at this, when you get to something that's such a long time, it really is something we, maybe it becomes legal, it becomes something, but I just, I, this is, this really is insane, because if we're doing business with the same vendor, the vendor's handling us this way and that, I mean, my goal would be, I'm ordering another piece of equipment, I'm just gonna deduct it from your bill, as long as we have all the documentation that shows that, the history that this was wrong from the very beginning, okay, but I, you wouldn't handle that individually, so why, as a town, would we handle it this way? I guess that's the question I would ask.
Staff are doing their jobs, they're working on it.
Okay. I would, I would see, I mean, you might, okay. Nothing.
It will be sorted out, I mean, it's, it's, it's unfortunate, it is what it is at this point. I think it's past the point of no return, as far as getting any refund via the credit card, or anything along that line. It's, it's, again, it was not, it's just, it's a little more tricky also, when dealing with, when you're paying it through the government, because it comes out of certain accounts, and it comes out, this was encumbered money, it's not just money we had just laying around, it was all, it's just, was done in a specific way, where made it tricky that we needed the refund to come in before we could, before we could proceed. So, and, and it was not only hard enough to get the refund, but it was, the hardest part was getting the thing picked up and returned, at least that part is taken care of. It is no longer here, is out of here, is no longer taking up space and here, and not being used. And so, now we're just waiting on the final piece of the puzzle, which is the, the refund, which, again, I've been told through, not even just CDW, but the other vendor, the Synex or whatever, who actually was the one that drop shipped it, that it is in process, they just did not have a timeline. So I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that it should be fairly soon.
This just seems absurd. I'm, I'm not, you know, it just seems crazy.
It is.
$4,000 for a piece of equipment.
It is.
It's been all year waiting to get this straightened out, and it's still, you really don't know where it stands.
At this point, no. The whole thing is, the whole thing is a disaster.
I don't understand.
Here on it, is it worth any more of our time spent here at this table, where we can do nothing?
I mean, it's not really a 26 budget decision, it's, it's a, it's a 24 budget thing.
I think the board, I think, I think we're in a discussion, I think.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we've, yes, we can move on, yeah. Did anybody have any line item questions for Kevin? I mean, I think that the budget that he presented is fair, and I think it's all accounted for here in his breakdown. So my question is, is do we want to accept what I proposed as a tentative for this department? I'm okay with that.
The budget for last year was $128,000, this year it's $136,000, correct?
That's a salary.
That's salaries.
And the bottom line is, the $266,000 is now $285,000. I guess the only question that I would ask, okay, is there any place, is, you know, is there any way to do any savings in the maintenance and office and miscellaneous side? That's the question.
Well, also, the modified budget for 2025 was actually $302,000.
Well, that means, that means.
What did we modify for?
Um, I was gonna say, you can't go with that, because that is the encumbered, rolling over some money, it's also the Channel 22 money that we got from Cablevision, so we were able to order extra equipment, so we did a budget modification to recognize that grant coming in, as well as the additional expenditures.
Okay, yeah, that's, I was just curious as to why the modified happened.
Yeah, so it's better to look at the 2025 adopted.
Okay.
The maintenance budget is pretty much, is what it is, that's what we, that's what we have, as far as equipment and security services and whatnot, and those are the prices we're given, as to what, what all that stuff costs, between email accounts and backups, and all our backup systems and security systems, Threat Locker, Duo, Proofpoint, all that stuff is kind of preset. Laserfish is a certain price, the website's a certain price.
I mean, like, Threat Locker doubled in price, though.
Uh, because we, oh, yeah, it doesn't show, oh, it does show here. We, we, because Threat Locker, we did away with, we did away with the traditional antivirus. If you, if you look at the breakdown, it was 30, the antivirus line was 3,200, and it's now, I just moved, put it at zero and 26, because we're not belong, Threat Locker now handles the antivirus side of things. So we just kind of, it doubled in price on Threat Locker, but we were not paying for antivirus, so it's, it's almost a, it's a little bit more, but it's basically a wash, and it simplifies the backend, instead of having two competing products, deal with the workstation security, we just have one to deal with.
The IT committee, which Benjamin and I are both liaisons to, has reviewed this in our last meeting, and do not want to cut back on any of the maintenance items we have in here, for cybersecurity reasons. Also, as Kevin mentioned earlier at the beginning of his discussion, he does also review this with Eastland Computers. They discuss what needs to be covered. My concern is always with what happened with the county a few years ago, like, are we as strong and as secure as we should be?
You can always do more. There's never, there's never a limit to how much you can do, as far as that's concerned. We're pretty well covered, you're never perfect, nothing's ever perfect, but we have, what we have, we have a fairly good amount of safeguards to any kind of attack in some way. We have multiple levels of notification, or, or way of being, ways of being alerted if something, or if someone is meddling in our systems.
And Gordy, you asked about office and miscellaneous, that $300, Kevin is entitled to a cell phone reimbursement of $20 a month, so that's $240, and then there's just a little bit of extra, any other miscellaneous expenses, copies, or paper, or pens, anything that would get allocated to the IT department.
So you will accept the supervisor's tentative in this area? Yep, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Back to you, move back through all this again.
Oh, yeah, always.
Good.
As we go through, we need to fill in town board numbers, so that when Shelby's, you know, keeping us up to date where we land, when we've gone through all of the receipts and all of the expenditures, we know where we stand, as far as the number.
The only thing I think that is, as a result of today's conversation, we really should have all the documents that Kevin has been struggling with, and help him with the return, or get this thing straightened out with the printer, so I think he ought to gather all the correspondence with that vendor and so forth, so that it's resolved. It appears that if it continues in this direction, it's never gonna be brought to a conclusion. Okay, so that's just my comments, okay? I think you should, we should put it together, and then take a look at it, and see how we can help Kevin. He's, apparently has done as much as he can do at this particular time, and I think we should help him.
Okay, go for it.
You mean, go for it?
I felt like you were volunteering to do that.
Well, I, we need the documents.
Kevin has.
We need to see the history of letters and correspondence, credit cards, all that rest of it.
I can forward the entire email chain to the town board group, if you are so inclined.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Since you're here 10 minutes early.
Hazard of being tall.
Since you're here, we will respect your time, and let you get started early.
Absolutely.
You all saw the budget narrative. I think, you know, our, compared to some of the other departments, our, our budget reads like a haiku.
Yeah, you just all over the page, page-wise, you know, you have different.
Yeah, we're on.
It's different.
Right, and I should bring the player for that, and we do not have Mary Ellen, because we go from Monday to today, and she's still on vacation. So I'm gonna try and fight through some of the numbers.
Where are we starting, on 37?
Uh, yes, 37 is building department. We're divided up into two pretty much equal sections, building and zoning. For whatever reason, that's the way it's always been done. You know, they're almost mirrors of each other, you know, we pretty much split the things' expenses down. This year, you know, the big thing for us going forward, I think, is to be, is gonna be trying to, you know, come up with some, some sort of system, so that the public can better access records. You know, more and more, we're spending, we're spending time fulfilling foils, and it's, you know, sort of become death by foils. It would really help if real estate agents, and if members of the public can, you know, just get into the, a database online and go through it. So we've been talking to Microfish, the G I, Town GIS, to figure out the best way to integrate municity and all of our records. The big thing, you know, we've been talking to the town clerk's office, you know, kind of coordinating with them, and with the assessors. And what we would, I mean, I think that at some point or another, we're, the town's really gonna have to push to get a grant and digitize that building over there, you know, all the archives of records. Would help us in the field, the ideal situation from our standpoint, as, you know, building inspectors, just logistically, it would be great to have a laptop or a tablet that we can bring into the field, and we could access the drawings, you know, the historical drawings for a property, all that information, while we're there, we could even upload photographs. But until we have sort of a comprehensive database, that's, you know, we're kind of limping towards that at the moment, I would say. You know, our, you know, this year, we're, you know, we're again over projected revenues. I think, let's see here, we are, the figures that I'm using here are all from the end of August, so that's one-third of the, one-third of the, with one-third of the year left. And if you project it forward conservatively, because.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, I'm on page 42 now, revenues. You know, and by the end of August, we had brought in a total of $485,035.66. If you add a third to that, which is conservative, because a lot of our revenues come in in the fall, you're at 647. We had a projected of 624, so we are, you know, $23,000 projected, you know, to come in over what we were anticipating. And that's just because it just gets busier every year. You know, our big expenses are salaries, you know, we're, you know, we're very much people, most of our assets are the people, we don't have a lot of capital costs, as you can see.
Reid, what did you say that your permit, your anticipated revenue was?
Well, I'm, I'm just adding a third.
A lot, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just adding a third, which is, I think, conservative, and I came, we're, if you add a third to 485.35, you end up with about $647,000. We're actually one of the few departments that, you know, kind of pays for ourselves, I think. And we, we've tried to, we've tried to make it so that we do, because otherwise, you know, my feeling has always been that if, if the art, the cost of us doing our job is, is not paid for by fees, then the taxpayers are subsidizing some very expensive houses.
So you were saying, to the end of the year, you're anticipating 647?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's, you know.
624.
Yeah, I mean, that's just the simple math of adding a third, you know.
Basically a wash, actually.
But however, for 2026, you had put in a proposal of 624,000, again, I upped it to 633.
Yeah.
I don't, I didn't want to take it all the way up to the 647.
Well, and actually, I just realized, I made a stupid math mistake earlier. It's actually gonna be more than that, because I only added a third of 485, it's half of 485, because that's two-thirds of the year. So I'll get back to you on that, that was dumb, threw that together this morning.
But in terms of projecting what we should budget for 2026, part of the reason for not projecting it higher is, this year, we had the library, which was a huge project, a huge building permit fee, as well as permanent.
Uh, yeah, we, we're probably gonna have a bunch of private ones. The, the private, the high-end private permits just keep, keep going up, because they're so much bigger. We also, we also had, because of the moratorium, we actually missed out on some big permit fees, some really big permit fees, because we didn't have all the stuff that was over 6,000 square feet.
What did miss out, it just got time shifted?
Well, a lot, some of them, a lot of them, a bunch of them scaled it back, I mean, they, now people are, you know, have been going through, jumping through hoops to create projects that are not technically 6,000 square feet. You know, that.
Again.
Yeah, I know, it's bad. When we do what our, we do what we can, we should probably come up with another way of determining that number, because there are, there are some serious loopholes.
Yes, we are aware.
Uh, one thing I wanted to say is, you know, I, I'm pushing for 5% on salary increases. We have traditionally been kind of the redheaded stepchild over there, we don't, we don't have a lot of the benefits that, say, the highway department does. We are, when we hire people, they have to come in with a certain amount of experience and expertise, we're not hiring 25-year-olds, you know, we just got a young guy, and he's 38. You know, we just got a young guy, and he's 38. And he's got, you know, 20 years' experience in construction. It's become more and more competitive because the job has changed so much. You know, the building department has a very different task than it did even when I arrived. You know, we're doing, we're doing a lot more and a lot more things that require expertise and, you have to be, you have to constantly be learning new things, you know, floodplain management, you know. I'm much more involved now with zoning and with, you know, sort of some of the code issues than I think some of my predecessors are. And we are an old office, and people are going to be retiring. And we did really well with our new hire, I think. I think he's, I'm very, very happy so far. And I think part of that was we got, we got some of the salaries up. The other building departments on the South Fork and the North Fork are having, they're kind of in disarray, and they're having a real tough time finding people, because salaries have not kept up with the cost of living on the East End of Long Island. You know, with all due respect, I think that the cost of living increase calculations are not accurate for the East End of Long Island and especially Shelter Island. I think, you know, the seat-of-the-pants feel, when you go in the IGA or look at apartment prices, rental prices, just the cost of living in general out here has gone off considerably more than 2.3%, and it's been that way for a while, and we've sort of lost ground. I'm, the one thing I would push for is to increase salaries more than is being proposed.
Back to your new hire, how long has he been on the job now?
He started September 1st, so not quite four weeks.
But so far, you're?
I'm very optimistic, yeah.
Okay, because a lot of construction experience, but he's never been a building inspector before.
Nobody ever, we've never hired anyone who had been a building inspector before. I think that's good. I think that, you know, in the field, experience is good. Unfortunately, it's become a white-collar job. It's really become, you know, as you know, it's half lawyering some, I feel like sometimes. It's interpreting code and working with code. And so in that sense, it's changed, and that's where, you know, he's, he's got a pretty, I wouldn't say academic background, but he's from thoughtful people who have been active in local government. His mom actually ran against our former town attorney, and also lost, but, you know. So he's grown up around that, and he seems to have a really good feel for how towns operate. You know, the family's been involved with stuff, government on the North Fork for a long time. His mother actually worked for the town.
Interesting.
Yeah, no, no, no.
South Old.
Yeah.
Great. That's encouraging. That was a hard spot to fill for a long time.
Yeah, it's been a tough one. We had, last time, when Michael was hired, we had three applicants. You know, it was much harder to get anybody in. We did expand it to people off-island, which I think was a game changer in many ways.
It's also salary adjustment.
Yeah. Yeah, you want good people, you have to pay for good people. Did you have any questions? The one thing, the one thing that I wanted to advocate for more, more on than what Amber proposed, is the education and training. It looks like, again, and this is something we can discuss, that they are not going to offer, they're not going to offer a building inspector credit, credited training at the Association of Towns.
I was going to ask that, because they didn't do it last year either.
No, last year was the first year they decided not to, and I'd been advocating, you know, we used to go and we would get two-thirds of our training, required training there, 16 hours of 24. Now we're having to do it, you know, having to find.
16 hours over 24 months?
It's, you know, in 12, in 12 months, we have to get 24 hours of training that's certified. We actually usually do more training, we do more training, but of the required, New York State required training. So now we have to find it. In fact, Wednesday, I was supposed to go get it, but I got sucked into something. Michael and Brett went up-island and did a day of training up-island.
And you normally do it that way, or is it online?
It's both. It's both. Some people, you know, I, it's better, frankly, in person, I find, but we can do it online too. And more and more, that's what we're moving for. So, I mean, I, you know, we could probably consider not going to Association of Towns or Office this year, which might save a bunch of money.
Would we need to allocate some of that down to education and training?
Yes, I would like to see, I would like to see some of that moved there.
What's this thousand-dollar bet?
So if they don't have the training for Association of Towns, should Mary Ellen go, or is it not really, it just doesn't benefit anybody?
I don't think, I think at this point, we could skip it. I mean, it used to be a very efficient way of getting a lot of training.
You guys just do an extra day there and get your others in.
Yeah, it's no longer an efficient way to get in training, because, I mean, there's now more, there's never, they didn't used to be online training at all. Now there is, you know, we used to have to drive to Yonkers to do this stuff. It's changed a lot.
Two questions. One, did anything ever work out with Brookhaven? Because the supervisor had mentioned to all of the other Eastern supervisors about opening something and opening it up to more than Brookhaven Building Inspectors.
I've been a bit baffled by that, because they, it's funny, they, I've tried to sign up to those classes. They are filled up within five, you never know exactly when they're going to go on. And we used to sit and, we would sit and watch them refresh the screen and hit send, and you would, they would refresh the screen, you know, we'd refresh the screen, they would open it up, and we would hit apply, and it was already filled up. I don't know, I think somehow some of the towns must have some connection where they just are pre-registered or something, because there's a very limited number of seats. I'd like to find out more about that, actually.
Danico, can you go back then, since if we take getting any credits from Association of Towns off the table, can you go back and rework your education and training budget?
Yes.
To figure out what, what you'll have to pull in to make up for that and get your requirements?
Yeah, I've got a couple things. One's online, there's a building science thing that goes on up in Massachusetts that, you know, probably stay there far cheaper than in New York City and, you know, get some, some of the, you know, and it's not just, at this point, it's not just the credits. I think it's important for us to be getting trained to actually do our, you know, do our job better. Sometimes the, in a funny way, like many things, the training, the training for the state requirements has become a bit of a racket, where, you know, Simpson Strong-Tai does these trainings that are basically pitching their product, and you can go sit through those, and it's the same ones every year. You know, it's, I'd like to have something that actually benefits people's ability to do their job, not just fulfills the requirements.
Doesn't Long Island Builders Association have educational functions?
Yeah, but, well, the Long Island Builders Association is a bit of a, you know, it's a, they're pitching things like doing all the, I mean, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a lobbying group. There's BOSAP, BOSAP, Building Officials of Suffolk County. That's the one that's actually good. And that was actually, they did the training that, it's limited, but if you hit all of them, it can be, it can be a big step. That's what.
That's the one that's done in Yampak.
That's, that's the one that's done in, actually, Lindenhurst, and that's what they did on, two days ago. That was the, that's a, that's a good one. The Long Island Builders Association is a, you know, they're trying to sell things like, like going to all online, building permit applications, third-party inspections, all these things that are, that benefit contractors. I'm a little suspicious.
So who are we planning on sending from the building department to AOT this year? Just Reed and Mary Ellen?
No, we were, in the budget was Reed, Brett, Jeffrey, Mary Ellen.
Michael and Mary Ellen, I think, because, because next year, he's, our new guy is going to have, he's going to have to 120 hours of the intro class. It's, it's basic training. He actually can't do inspections until he's finished all that. He's just signed up for it. But that's going to be all online now. We just have to drive to Yampak for that.
And AOT was, what, $1,500 a person or something?
Yes. We had $3,810 in there, so we took that out. Yeah, we had five people we were sending. I forgot all that.
So that's even more. It was $7,000.
Yeah. But, but your education to $4,000, because it sounds like it's going to take. Yeah, I mean, if you could get back to us with a realistic number, rather than just picking a number out of the air.
Yeah. Yeah, the, yeah, the last few years, those numbers have been kind of moved around, you know. Yeah, between that and the revenue surplus, I think we've got our 5%.
Then we need to up the revenue, the receipt side of the equation, because right now, we've got 633,000 budgeted for revenues, and the total in expenses is 634,550. So that was, at the moment, say, taxpayers are funding $1,550, or no, not quite that much, $1,000 of.
Right, and I'm sure there's other stuff that's not, like them keeping the lights on and things, I know there's.
Yeah, that doesn't take into account employee benefits.
But I think as departments go, we're a part.
You also do more than just, I mean, you refer with your denial letters to SBA, to special permits, I plan review. So there is a piece of your job that is greater than just building departments, right?
Yes, and I would argue that my job is, now, I've sort of become Lori, Chris, and had some other stuff thrown in too. It's just, you know, and that reflects, you know, it used to be that if you walked in the building department in an afternoon, in a normal afternoon, it was pretty quiet. I believe there was solitaire being played. It's not like that anymore. It's a very different.
My, I actually, the question I had was about Association of Towns, because I remembered last year, it was, didn't have enough guys to go.
I mean, it was, it was how, it was useful, but I don't think it was, you know, I was reflecting on it the last few, couple of weeks, and was it, when I look at how much it costs, was it that useful?
The other question I had for you was cell phones. You guys get cell phones, or are you getting reimbursed for cell phones, and then do we need to add the new employee to this list? I don't know if that's.
That's a good question. I just got a cellphone yesterday. Brett does not use his cellphone. He actually turned his in, because he just wasn't using it.
Did the telephone line?
Yeah, I think that's.
Yes, I think so. That's what I was kind of curious about.
I'm not, I've never been clear, because it always seems like, I mean, the cell phones that we get are, you know, they're, they're, they're expensive cell phones. They're not cheap cell phones.
So these are, these are town cell phones?
Yes.
Okay, so you have two, you have your own personal cellphone as well as?
Yes, but I have my own personal cellphone. We're not supposed to use that for anything town-related, or the subpoena, which we don't want.
Makes sense.
Yeah. But they're actually, you know, and it's funny, but we're, we used to have cameras, and that, it was that part of the budget. We hadn't bought a camera in terms, we use our cell phones.
That's the same, use your phone.
They're better than any, you know, any of the cameras.
When you were on job sites, Reed, you, you do photographs, do you include them in that file?
Yes.
Assuming you're doing that, right?
Yeah, and we're trying to push, we've been pushing to, to photograph on final inspections or when we're doing a walkthrough for a real estate transfer. It's been an uphill battle to get people to do it, because there's a lot you're spitting or doing when you're doing an inspection. I think probably the thing to do when we're doing those inspections is to have two people go, and one just photograph and take notes, and the other do the inspection, because otherwise it's, you know, you're juggling. I think that going, we've talked a lot with the assessor's office, and the goal is to photograph everything so we have a record of where it was at. So in 10 years, somebody can't say, oh, no, no, that basement was, and also so that the assessors can come in and get an accurate picture of what's, what's there, because there are a lot of discrepancies between what they have on record and what we have.
I know there was talk about linking Municity to GIS and getting documents uploaded that way.
Yeah.
I think that's probably, because, and the reason I say this is because both the assessors use the GIS program and the building department uses the GIS program, and I think it was less expensive to link Municity with GIS than it was to link Laserfish with GIS at the moment.
At the moment.
And we're hoping that over time, that cost goes down, but then we'll already have the archive built up in Municity. So if we can look into linking Municity with the GIS, that would start putting more documents forward-facing for the public and give Laserfish the time to build, essentially build the internal archive, the part that the public doesn't see, which takes quite a while to do, so that we can get that built and have it be correct and robust before it goes forward-facing.
But it is compatible, that was.
But it is compatible.
Right.
So over time, while you guys are working on your archive in Municity and with the assessors, because you guys combine into that program, we can work on that, but still have some forward-facing for the public through the GIS.
Yes.
Eventually convert that to Laserfish and drop the GIS portion. So that was something that I know I had discussed with the assessors and Mary Ellen and you.
Yes.
Is that accounted for in here?
Um, no, we have, actually, it's, I've got a sheet here. This is something where I wish Mary Ellen was here, because she's been handling the money side of this. One thing that, because I ran my own business for a long time, I always, when I see a number like, oh, it's going to be $4,000, I think that's an awfully round number, and we could hammer them on that. And I actually wanted to talk to people about that, you know, the vendors. The one thing that I was thinking, and I think it might be money very well spent for the town, would be to have someone who is a disinterested third, not disinterested, but without a conflict of interest, consultant come in and just say, how do grown-up towns do this? Because we're relying on the vendors to tell us what the advantages of this program or that program are, and it would be nice, we're, we brought Kevin into it, but I think it would be good to have someone who really has experience with how towns, you know, in the same way that we, we got Teresa Mason in from Southampton, maybe there's someone we can bring in, and it wouldn't have to be necessarily an ongoing thing, but someone just to say. but someone just to say, hey, we've looked into this, this works, this doesn't. So we're not relying on the vendors to, you know.
Or can we talk to surrounding towns?
That's what I did with Laserfish, who used what, what worked.
Yeah.
How much, you know, volume do you have? And that's how we implemented, we stuck with Laserfish. Because I had vendors come out and give us quotes. And like you said, you know, they wanna sell you stuff, whether it's feasible for us or not.
Yeah, I mean, I, I sat through.
It's hard.
The Little Dog and Pony Show by the GIS people and the Laserfish people. And then there was someone else that came through who seemed like complete carpetbaggers. And somehow, at the end of it, I didn't feel. The contrition in my ability to.
One of the vendors that came in, we were all on the same.
Yeah, 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 they were just, you know.
It's like walking into, you know, a car lot. It was.
Getting sore lemons.
Yeah.
Final siding salesman.
Yeah.
So money from Municity is under the contract line?
Uh, yeah, that's.
That where it was?
Yes.
Yep.
It's split between Building Department and Zoning Department.
And our car maintenance, it's funny, certain things are real wild cards, like the car maintenance, and we're in great shape, because we got the electric cars a couple of years ago. They don't seem to need much, but. But eventually they're gonna need new tires. And new tires are gonna be more than our whole, you know, it's, we try not to do that thing of spending all the money that we have allocated just because we don't want to lose it. Car maintenance, you know, there should be, I think, some way of amortizing that over multiple years, better than we do.
Do you charge them? Do you charge them?
Right here. We got a, we've got a hookup here. We used to do it over there, but they.
It's a credit card system now.
It is, yeah, it used to be free, but now it's not. But we have, we have the little charger over here.
The grant on that was originally three years of free electricity.
So you, you have, you have quick charges over there now?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're not super, they're not, I'm gonna go so far. They're 220 and they, I don't remember what the amps are, I think 40 amps. But then we have two of them and we can, it allows us to charge them overnight. We had, originally had one over here that was 110 and it took all weekend to charge a car, you know, in the butt.
Actually, probably.
It was not efficient, we'll put it that way.
The equipment budget, we still have most of this year's. I don't like to spend the equipment budget until the end of the year, because if something breaks, it can destroy. But we, you know, we, you know, we have a Soviet, here are Romanian office over there. We've got filing cabinets, pens. We use, we always get hand-me-down desks. I just got, you know, Ken's old desk. We try not to get too extravagant with stuff.
Do you share the vehicles with the assessor's office when they need to do their rounds? I occasionally take one when I go to Suffolk County or East End Supervisors meetings.
Yeah, they're kind of town cars. We just use them more than anybody else. The new Laurel is the one who uses the, one of, she's actually out there all the time using one of the cars. She's very, been very proactive about doing assessments. And so she's the, she's the one who, besides us, uses them the most.
Right, you have education and training in both the zoning and the Building Department?
Yeah.
Okay.
Reed, is Michael pretty much enforcement duties?
Michael, at this point, he does, I mean, he does building inspections, he does enforcement. He was, you know, being trained by Mickey to do enforcement. I'd like to have the new guy be doing a fair amount of that. A lot of what Michael ends up doing is, he does, I mean, the tent inspections have become just a huge thing, because there's, there seem to be more events with tents. There are a lot of tent inspections. He does some of those on Saturdays, just because that's the way it falls out. They tend to get, you know, put up at the last minute for a wedding and he has to go out on a Saturday morning. He does the rental, the rental inspections, which they've only been around for the past three years and that's been a huge time suck. It's important, but, you know, it's, I would say, it'd be interesting to actually track his time. Rental inspections are very labor-intensive, because you have to explain to homeowners what's involved. And there's a lot of hand-holding and a lot of multiple calls and multiple visits. He does that very well, you know, he's very good, he's very good with people who are anxious about interacting with the Building Department. I tend to be a little abrasive, I guess, but he's much more comforting.
So I guess the only question we have for the Building Department budget is let us know your education and training.
Okay.
If you're gonna kind of figure out a more hard number for what you think it's gonna be. And we have the same line in zoning. So whatever your total is, we'll split it between the two of us.
Yeah.
And can you give us a return-to date on that?
I'm sorry, why not?
Return-to date, when you can get that number back to us.
And, and I can do it in a week.
3810 for AOT goes away, but it'll be replaced by whatever.
Right, yeah, but whatever, training, some of course, yeah. Let's say our next. We've been budget meeting on Monday and then not again until October 15th, although I did hear whispers that while Albert's away, you were thinking about scheduling something, additional meetings?
Yes, I think we can fit something in.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
You were comfortable with that?
As long as I'm just surprised when I come back, that's all. Any changes or issues, whatever's been decided.
So we'll schedule that after. So, yeah, a week or so is good. We'll tell you when the next budget meeting is.
Okay.
Any other questions or adjustments that you want to make to Reed's budget at the moment? No, I mean, it's, it's pretty much a mirror image in the zoning department as it is in the Building Department. There's no real change there.
Yeah, there's some things I'd also like to discuss. I do want to, I'm pushing to get Mary Ellen bumped up to a principal office assistant. She had a, she, as near as I can see, fulfilled all the requirements with civil service, but they felt that because she didn't accept tax payments, that she wasn't qualified. I'm looking at their criteria, I don't understand where that comes from.
Was that ever part of her job?
No, it wouldn't be, yeah, yeah. It's, it's for some, I don't know, I'm not sure. But if you look at the civil service criteria, she, she does all that and more. I mean, she's more than a clerk and a secretary, we all know. And I sort of think she should be recognized for that. I was hoping that, you know, when, I know you hear this all the time. Jerry was here, he did, he made some promises for the future that she feels she didn't get. So I would, I think a good way to keep her happy. And, I mean, you know, and doing, working as hard as she does, because she works very hard, you know, would be to get her that, that promotion to principal office, office assistant.
And then you're the fire marshal.
Yes.
For the next budget section.
Oh, yeah. Uh, yeah, that's, I just spent about $900 getting five NFPA books that I needed, so there goes that budget.
The fire warden, we zeroed out.
Right.
The fire warden used to be Freddie Ogar. It was Freddie Ogar and, and unclear what, what was going on.
Reed, do you do commercial inspections?
Oh, sure.
Okay, so we're inspecting all the commercial buildings?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm actually, all is the fire inspection time of year, because if I go in there to do a fire inspection in July, someone will have a brain aneurysm and a nervous breakdown. So we try and do it now, so that by this, you know, by the time the season starts.
They're wrapped.
So it's once a year?
Yeah, well, it depends on what it is different. There are different requirements for different, you know, places with assembly occupancy are every year. Certain, you know, places with high hazard are every year. Other places are every two years. And that's actually one of the things I would like to get the new guy doing fire inspections, because at the moment I'm the only one that does them and I'm always way behind on that.
And you'll work with Thomas to make sure that anything that you issue on Fire Marshal will be supportable.
Yeah, I'm actually looking forward to work, you know, we, we need to really step up our enforcement game as far as follow-through. One of the big things, I think it's in my, I put it in the, the outline, the synopsis that we submitted is, we've gotta be better about tracking stuff. We have always had a tendency to send, and we've been, like, you know, we've been sending out notifications for expired, Mary Ellen's been diligently sending out notifications for expired building permits, which of course has people up in arms. Because we have so many building permits that were just never closed out. There's some piece of paper missing, usually a survey, because people don't like to spend the money to get a survey. And it goes on and on and on. So people have, you know, open COs.
Is there a way to set up like frags and alerts in Municity for the project?
That's, that's what I want to do. And we've been talking, talking to Mary Ellen about it. I think that I am the last person that should be in charge of setting up alarms on a calendar. It's something I'm, the kind of thing I'm not particularly well-suited for. But, but I need them more than anyone else. But I think all of us, when a bill, I would love it if, when a building permit expires, if something pings on everybody's calendar or on.
It should be something that can get set up.
Absolutely.
Mary Ellen, it's one of those things, like you issue the permit and at the same time you issue it, you set an alert for the expiration date. And then.
Yes.
You don't have to think about it. And then in two years or whenever the expiration pops up, you'll get an alert.
Yeah, she's been doing it for some stuff and we really have to do it. One of the problems we had when Mickey was here was, he was great at writing notices of violation, but then they, nothing ever happened. In the past, part of the, to, you know, gonna get on my soapbox again. Part of the problem is traditionally, we have not had support from the town attorney or from the courts. And we would go through, waste a tremendous amount of time on some enforcement action, like Bucalo or, you know, on Emerson, there was a house for years that was being operated as a boarding house. It was a disaster. We would put in, you know, at one point, I think I put in about 60 hours on enforcement with the Emerson house over the period of a year and went to the court and a previous town attorney negotiated a no-fine solution on the steps and that was that. And even when it does go before a judge, there's a tendency for them to pay like a littering ticket or something. You know, at that point, we sort of feel like, well, why bother? Why bother wasting so many, so many resources, so much of the town resources if nothing's ever gonna be, be done?
Well, I guess the goal is really for compliance, not necessarily looking for the fines, right?
I guess, no, except that, exactly. But if there's not some penalty, it becomes, and you know, they, they're not above waving it in our faces after they cut off. You know, and it just became, we feel silly, you know. And then they go back to doing the same behavior. I think that a fine is part of.
Behavior modification.
Behavior modification, yeah. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, so I'll see you in a week.
Yeah, we'll let you know when.
Yeah, whenever, we're, thanks.
Thanks, Reed.
Thank you. That is it for the department heads coming in today. I did.
It was 11:30, so I wasn't sure how long I can give her a call, so she can.
She wants to. Session, did she not come in on Tuesday? I thought that was.
No, she never confirmed on Tuesday. It was just added in there, but it's confirmed for today.
Actually, I didn't hear you say that.
Yes. We can go through the questions that came up at Tuesday's, so around our last budget meeting. Yes. Yeah. Um, I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to talk about it. I have not had a chance to go watch the tape on Tuesday yet to see where things landed. I will do that before we meet again on Monday. I just tried to get caught up yesterday. I did want to discuss fund balance for a minute, because I saw that there was this spreadsheet entitled Reserve Fund Crisis and I didn't know you were so dramatic.
I'm very dramatic.
I, we're not in crisis. I didn't get a chance to review it yet, but I did glance at it and I did see that there's some incorrect assumptions that were made in there, just some numbers that were being used, which is understandable. Your CFO, your CFO doesn't know, you know, how the town operates, deep dive into municipal accounting, assumptions that we made, what department head decisions get made during the year in order to create or utilize fund balance.
The numbers did tie into what's in this book, though.
Yes, but there's more nuances to it. So I will take a look and work on that and come back to you with an analysis. But I, I also am surprised at the discounting that you all do with respect to my education and my experience level. I know municipal accounting probably more than all of you put together. I know more. So that discounting is surprising to me, but it's also given me an opportunity, along with your questions, to realize where your ignorance lies. And I say ignorance, not stupidity, because ignorance can be educated, where your ignorance lies into how fund balance works. So I will work on that over the, over the weekend, hopefully, so I can give you a presentation back on what you have given, you know, distributed to the board as well as the community to go, to take a better look at that and better understand that.
And the real point of it was just to have this discussion, because it wasn't being discussed and people I talked to absolutely had no understanding of it at all.
And that is something that we usually, to Gordon's point of wanting to go line by line through the budget and do zero-based budgeting and, you know, your concern about taking out, the two of you, you know, take out the fund balance pool and try and preserve fund balance at the cost of higher taxes for the taxpayers, that is usually something that we do at the end of the process. So we've, we've flipped what has historically been done, but I will rejigger that. But for the moment, we've got $17 million worth of expenditures and 3.7 million. and 3.7 million dollars worth of receipts to review to see if we can get those numbers down. So, but just wanted to have a say on that.
Well, that's it. Try and spark the conversation.
Yes, and we were always going to have it, just at a different time, different timing. So where did you leave off, what page with respect to going through the budget?
So we didn't actually go through any line by line. We only went through the sections that corresponded with the people who came in. So we didn't do anything outside of that. So we talked to Kelly and went through nutrition and zimmers. And then we spoke with Bethany and went through her line items. So I made notes and questions on those. We can go through. If anybody else has questions, we can do those. But we didn't do any additional line by line questioning. So A fund, yeah, I think so. So then I need to go to my notes.
The Senior Center, is that where we started?
Yes. And why are we going back to Senior Center? I was just going to start with the ones that we went over when we weren't here, unless you want to watch the video.
I can just watch the video. Yeah, there's no sense dragging everybody through it again. I can go back and watch the video. It's from the town board.
It'll be as well.
Right, yeah, sure.
Assessors, I think is where we went off. I have notes that we finished, had to receive. And then I have assessors as the next.
Yeah. And the decision was that we were not going to ask Judith to come in and talk about her budget. So are there any questions that you have that we can send back to her? Or when she is back, she's away right now. When she's back, we can have her come in if there's any questions.
For office and miscellaneous for that line, I have.
What page?
Sorry. At seven. I see that you reduced the office and miscellaneous from 3,675 to 1,500. And I realize I haven't spent that much yet, but in the past they have. And I wasn't sure if it was because you weren't doing the same number of mailings that we had in previous years because we now have the revow done. I wasn't sure if that or if there are other support contracts.
It was handy when you were coming in remotely benching because I could take my big bucket and take over your side and add it out.
I was having a go.
Okay, under office and miscellaneous in 2024, there was an expenditure in December for a new desk, three drawer filing cabinet, a storage cabinet that will not need to be repeated.
Okay, that makes sense.
This is assessors.
Yes. So that's why I lowered it from the 2024 numbers.
All right. That makes sense. And then my other question was for support contracts. She had 2,800, you dropped it down to 24. But I know that the modified was 26. So I wasn't sure if there was a new contract or a contract changed. And I wasn't sure if GIS is something that they could share with the building department? And if we could spread that out over the two departments, because we both use. GIS is under Kevin. It's under Kevin, yeah. But I wasn't sure if that was something, because I know that Judith works very closely with them because all of that data gets updated every, every year with the tax roll. So I wasn't sure if part of that contract would actually be correct. But here. I do know for 2024, we took $350 out of the contract. It wasn't really being utilized there, so we were over budgeted. And we have a Xerox contract, we have an Apex contract, and we have the Office of Real Property Tax Services contract. So those three alone add up to 2,478, did I leave the number?
Okay, 2,400.
And then there's just some miscellaneous copy paper. No, not, Xerox copy contract in there. So that looks good. I know that we're going to try to hire a new person. And I wasn't sure if that education and training would have to modify for a new person. If they would need more education and training because it's a new position for them? Or if it was maybe included in this?
Which liner you want? 58 and 55.492?
Yeah, 492.
Reason being, okay, so yes, I did consider that. So just as an announcement, oh, actually.
But we're looking to hire.
We're looking, yes, yes. I'm not sure. We have made an offer for the.
New assessor?
For the, let me just write, for the full-time deputy assessor. So we will, yes, there will be training, but we also, Laurel was new last year. And so she had increased training costs in order to get her leveled up to where she needed to be. So keeping that number the same allows for a similar training pattern to take place in 2020.
Right, but what I was saying is they've already spent more than their budget. So last year it was 2,700, this year they've spent 3,800. So I wasn't sure if they would, they would need that extra training money if we're bringing in a new part-time person to get them trained as long as, so I was bringing the new person up to speed on their new position.
Okay, yeah, I think when I was reviewing this, we had not gotten the August numbers yet because I only had $1,400 of training.
Okay.
Through that point in time. So that goes up to 38.
Did we hire the new part-time assessor?
It's not a new part-time, it would be a new full-time.
The part-time was supposed to become a full-time?
It's a part-time that's becoming a full-time. Yes.
And then the question is, would we then look for a new assessment aide?
Yes.
And so would there be training for that person? I wasn't sure. So in my notes, I had it bumped up to 38 just in case the two new people need more training.
Right, but let's, yeah, let's revisit that one and talk to Judith because she will be able to help with knowing what training schedule. I do know that I, I believe that Laurel completed her training faster.
So she might have been more than she.
I think it's a year and a half. Yeah, I think it's a year and a half that you need to get all of the training under your belt. And I believe she got it done within a year.
Okay.
I mean, that's.
She'll become the new full.
Yeah, but again, maybe the new person would want to try and do a similar track because once you have your training, you're more useful to the office. But let's ask Judith when she's back.
Okay.
So Laurel will be bumped up to new part-time to full-time? And then we're hiring a new assessment aide?
We can't say just yet.
Possibly. Okay.
Those are my questions. While you're back, there's ask over to checkers.
Ask what?
Over to check for text messages. Is there anything else in assessors? So we'll just roll everything over from the tentative into the top board column until we get an answer. Yes.
Vehicle that they use, okay, that, those are all the cars, correct? And where are they located? Is that locked into one section of the budget? All the electric cars? Or is that building department?
They, they use the cars that are logged in with the building department under vehicle maintenance.
So part of the budget here is for assessor for cars?
I took out vehicle maintenance because there one hasn't been any. And also if it's going to get billed by the highway department when, if they do the maintenance on the vehicles or if it gets sent out to those two or whoever it is that we bought the vehicles from, it'll probably get allocated to the building and zoning departments. That's why I took the number down from 1,000 to zero.
What Reed said is true. I mean, light trucks don't really need maintenance, but you need new tires because they're heavier and they run through tires faster. And the tires are more expensive than regular tires. They're specialized tires.
So right now under vehicle maintenance in the building and zoning department collectively, it's $1,000. So could that cover?
Oh, yeah.
It could cover at least one vehicle.
Yes.
My only concern there is two of the vehicles we were able to get through a grant program. So we had two vehicles roll on in the same year. It's from being that. She texted me back. I was gonna, I was gonna make that announcement in a minute. It's just that we probably have to replace two sets of tires. So maybe we do want to put something back in here or up the building department for two sets of tires.
Are those cars like two years old? Maybe three, two?
Yeah, I want to say two. Maybe three at the, well, two and a half at the end of this year.
It'll get driven that much, but yeah, after three years, you'll need new tires.
And there's three cars?
There's three, but they're on different cycles. We've got two of ones. So it's probably more likely that the oldest one is going to need tires first.
Could you put half in their budget and half in the building budget?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what we were just discussing is there's $1,000 between zoning and building department. We had a thousand, Judith had $1,000 in here because she wasn't sure if she was going to get charged for any, any of the maintenance on the, on the vehicles. So we could restore so many here. Because it could be a third, a third, and a third. A third in zoning, a third in zoning, a third in assessors. Yeah. I'm going to ask for Highway to just pull the maintenance record on this.
Then do we get tires through state contract? Or is that something that we have to? Does it be much cheaper through state contract?
True, I haven't seen anything come through on replacing tires for any vehicles in the past year and a half, so.
We can ask him tomorrow.
Monday.
Or Monday. I, my days of the week are all one blur in my brain.
Yes. All right, so we'll ask about vehicle maintenance when we think those tires need to be replaced to see whether or not it needs to go into this year's budget.
Even if we put a small amount in just to help cover the cost, if we do some from here, some from building, some from. Maybe how, how much tires cost for those cars?
So we did get confirmation from HR that Laurel has accepted the position to be the deputy assessor. That's very.
Full-time deputy assessor.
Yes, yes, yes. So she has been our assessment aide. So she will be moved to the next line down.
And that's 65.
Yes. And we will be advertising for a new assessment aide. I believe that that position is going to be advertised at 51,500. I was just going to ask that, so.
A modified budget number?
Yeah. I think we can adjust that.
Adjust that too.
And may tweak it just a little bit. I think I'd mentioned this before, maybe when we were talking about the Justice Court clerk. Just to hold somebody at a raise for, you know, it is average hour a year and a third or, you know, in this case, be a shorter period of time by the time we finish the hiring process. But kind of prorating what the increase would have been if we actually, if we gave raises on people's higher rates.
We should also think about that for the new building inspector.
Yes, yeah, I need to note chat on that. And that's the policy to do the calculation, yeah. Yeah.
So advertising at 51, they were asking for 54.
Right, yeah. Yeah, Judith had put in some higher increases. I took everybody back to the two and a half percent.
So what's the 52.8? That's going to change the 51.5.
Correct, and with maybe a third of a year increase, just so that they. I'll give you the calculation.
Okay.
I'm doing the math in my head, but it's taking the 51.5 and in a year, they would have gotten the two and a half percent increase for three months. And I'll prorate that back over the entire episode here for the three months. I have done that calculation back in the Justice Court section for the port clerk.
The new port clerk.
No, actually I have it start to do that as well. Yeah.
You know, I think we're going to do all the salary month at the same time.
Yeah, we can review that.
Two and a half for the last quarter.
Of 2026, yeah. So if we're, actually if we're on the assessor, then that 51,500, that would be adding an extra $430.
So 51,930?
Yes. And if we go back a page to page five, if we're looking at that for the clerk, the 0.103 line, it would be 65,540.
65, what, 540?
Yeah, actually just rounded up to 550.
Just have a note from the 17th that you put 550.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so I did that, actually do that tab later when we talked last week.
Yes. I have that in the other spreadsheet, the salary spreadsheet.
Okay. So, okay, so then Shelby, how's it? Just want to update the salary spreadsheet on the fly here for that one. Minor adjustment. We said 51,930. The assessment aide. And I guess we want to do the same for the deputy assessor then. So add $400, so 65,400.
The age 51,930.
Yes. So we have two questions, open questions on the subgroups. You add something for vehicle maintenance after we review, have, not we review, but have the highway maintenance department review the maintenance records cars and school travel mileage. What Judith thinks the training, training budget.
For the new assessment aide.
This new assessment aide. But be sure to congratulate Laurel when you see her.
Okay.
She's, she starts on Monday in the new position.
Did you say the number was for the assessment aide, fifty-one nine thirty?
One nine thirty. One nine thirty, yeah.
The full-time assessor was sixty-five.
Sixty-five five fifty.
Sixty-five four hundred.
Sixty-five four hundred? Where do you get five fifty from?
From the Justice Court clerk. The reason for the difference is just, yes, one month difference in start date. You can turn the page. Assessment board to review. They've been busier. They have been busier. If you look at the twenty twenty-four adopted versus actual, the, the board did not spend as much time. They did spend more time this year, but through August thirty-first numbers are final. They are done with the, the process. So there won't be any additions to their time for this year. Next year, I mean, this year was a big, a bigger year because of the, the rebound. So there were more people that came in in the past years when there was no increases other than for people who did new construction or building renovations. They were the only ones coming in to grieve their, their taxes for the most part. So it was a bump up this year. Keeping the number similar to this year, even with the bump up because there could be some more that come through the pike because there are services out there that go and solicit people to see, you know, we'll, we'll grieve your taxes for you. So Judith does have a concern that next year, that that, that process, that solicitation may garner some more cases this year.
I think that's a valid concern.
And we're not talking big money here, right?
Well, it's four hundred dollars.
Yeah, fine, right.
Four hundred dollars is another kind of to change the world.
Amber, have you scheduled yourself the, the time to?
Hold it sixteenth.
Okay.
I hold it.
We will skip over the town clerk.
You start.
Town attorney. So the biggest change you will see in this year versus last year is that we don't have a town attorney employee salary figure, but we do have outside legal counsel. So any of the invoices that come from Wayland Filer will be booked here because that's historically where we've had the attorney costs. So rather than having it thrown into professional fees, professional services up on the town board section, we will continue to track them here.
Well, Wayland Filer's work with the planning board is not here.
No, it's in, it's in the B fund under planning board. And I did speak to Thomas about when we get later in the year, just what negotiating, what the professional services fees would be. And they, the firm seems to be committed to holding to this. If we were to have to pay them their hourly rate, it would be double.
One fifty-nine is the number.
Yes, so they are continuing to give us a good deal.
On the next line, I thought maybe it was a typo. For office miscellaneous, miscellaneous, we had thirty-five hundred, we had three fifty. I thought maybe that was a typo. Because they've already spent twenty-one hundred. Yes.
That is for just have to think for a second. If we have LexisNexis or, yeah, Westlaw. And so Christina is in the process. We have been continuing that contract as we were going through interviews and trying to determine who was going to, you know, how we were going to move forward with the town attorney. We didn't want to cancel the contract. We are committed to it for the year, but Christina's been working on that and I think has been able to work on getting us out of it in October. So we will not have that contract because Wayland Filer has, they're always through that LexisNexis or Westlaw that they have access to. So there's no reason for us to have it in-house.
Okay, great.
Excellent. Well, I mean, of course, well, twenty twenty-four till going forward, the numbers are pretty much the same.
And the training and conferences, that line I left at eighteen hundred, that's if there's any on Wayland Filer's bills, if there's any billing for out-of-pocket expenses that they have.
Jevody kicks in for Christina.
Yes.
Five years.
Yeah, she's been with the town longer, but she was part-time up until five years ago.
When is Jo scheduled to come in? Did you?
He came in.
Okay, so that'll be part of what I watch.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you make any changes? On Jo's, we did not.
I didn't think so.
Everything stayed the same.
Pretty straightforward.
I don't have any questions on that one either, so we can, you can watch the video, but it's pretty much done.
Green options, we just have the court costs. And then under office miscellaneous, that number, even though through August thirty-first, we've spent two hundred and fifty-five dollars, that is a carryover from year to year because they did get, Green Options did obtain a grant a number of years ago for five thousand dollars. And it has to be used for specific purposes. So there's two thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars remaining on that grant. I believe that there was a small portion that was spent this year on something in twenty twenty-four. Some of the buckets encompassing a program that we partnered with Sylvester Manor, who paid for from that grant.
Yeah.
That, that those expenses fall by. So of that thirty-two fifty, twenty-seven forty-eight is, will only be spent if it's an allowable grant expenditure and then that money gets pulled out of fund balance for that. And then the remainder is just copies.
Right.
Miscellaneous office expenses that they might have.
So the missing line here is grant revenue.
It's in office miscellaneous.
Oh, you mean just the offset?
Of course, yeah.
It's on the cover page. So if you go back to page four. If you look down in the lower left-hand corner, you'll see notes for fund day, the polls from fund balance. So that twenty-seven forty-eight, when the grant was received back in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, the five thousand that year got rolled into fund balance. So that has been set aside. And so each year it rolls back in if it's not spent and then we pull it back out so that that twenty-seven forty-eight is not getting paid for by taxpayers because it would get paid for from fund balance. Turning pages, Public Works, I think we can skip that.
When's Ken coming in?
Monday.
Monday nine a.m.
He's coming at nine.
What's the date?
Much longer the whole time, the twenty-ninth. Yeah, we have him, there's, he's coming in at nine and then our next appointment on Monday is at eleven with Andrew Chapron. So we'll skip over town board buildings, although some of the town board buildings is just yeah, repairs and maintenance, electricity, fuel, and telephone. So I don't know, I can't remember if that's part of Ken's top. A lot of those expenses. Electricity, fuel, and telephone.
Actually, I don't think we're both.
The handicap ramps. That's not the mobile one that we have that people borrow.
No.
I think was this ADA for one of the buildings in twenty-four. Please to bring to the
It might have been to the community center.
Yeah, I was near the community center, right. That was block grant, wasn't it?
It was. So I think on that line, the seven oh four oh was probably a budget modification because we didn't have anything adopted. So we had revenues coming on the grant and we expended it.
Right.
The handicap ramps for seniors would run through the senior lines.
And we have what, two of those or something?
Three.
Great.
No, we have more than three. We got three new ones last year. I think one was funded, I think, through the fire department. One was, I think, CDBG money that we might have had, and then I can't remember where the other one came from. But Tom Cronin spearheaded getting more because some of the ones that we had were missing parts and so we needed to ton grade a little bit.
Who moves them around and handles them and stores them? Is that building department or?
No, it's on the residential repair. Yeah, so if someone needs it, they call Julia Barbara. You can manage that and then we'll task our various residential repair people. And that's funded by a grant, yeah. So yeah, town board buildings is actually not under Ken's, it wasn't on the sheets given to him. So let me just find repairs and maintenance. So it's not like filling up the floor. The best, I just want to go back and take a look at.
What's the, the jump in electricity?
That, I believe, is where we're trending. Yeah, PSCNG did a rate change this year. So the way they're calculating commercial rates hasn't adjusted, so it
Quite a bit.
Could very well be because of that.
A thousand bucks, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, in twenty twenty-four, we spent fifty thousand and I think we're trending. I have a page on that. Well, and if we also have additional charging ports for the cars, that could be adding to the increased electrical cost. Because we put those in this year.
That's petty. I mean, the charger of those little electric cars, maybe ten dollars, maybe five.
Yeah, but we're doing three of them, pretty easy, just like, I mean, it would just be an additional use of electricity.
Those little, if you kill a lot batteries.
All right, so just to go to the top of the town board buildings, repairs and maintenance used to have water testing in there. And to better understand what, what it was costing us for water testing across the boards, we pulled that out and I believe that went to a line in Jo's budget.
No, not really.
No. Maybe it's under Public Works.
Yeah.
Yes.
Public Works.
Municipal building water compliance.
Doesn't that go back, Public Works go back to Ken?
It's fourteen ninety-four sixteen. Yes. Yeah, so we had budgeted last year for repairs and maintenance, twenty-four thousand five hundred, this, I mean, this year, twenty twenty-five. And we reduced it down to eighteen thousand eight twenty-five because we pulled money from there, we pulled money from seniors, we pulled money from nutrition program and moved it all into the fourteen ninety-four sixteen municipal water, municipal buildings water compliance. Because Jo monitors that and when he was reviewing the bills, it's easier for him to to have it all on one line, to understand what it's costing us so that if that can, if that cost continues to go up, he may make recommendations on how we do something different. So that's looking at repairs and maintenance to twenty-four thousand to the eighteen thousand. What's in there otherwise is optimum. We've got garbage removal, we have pest control, septic security systems. So that repairs and maintenance is not anything that is like when you were saying flooring at the shore.
Shoring up the floor.
Yeah, shoring up the flooring in this building is under
Ken.
Ken.
Okay.
This is just pure kind of maintenance.
Keeping the building functional, lights on, technologically working.
Yeah, water.
That's the main P and five.
That is the nineteen thousand five hundred. Now, to get back to the increase in electric. Yeah, I think I just extrapolated where the costs were coming so far this year. And when I looked at it, we had bills through June. So if you take the electric cost of thirty-two thousand eight ninety-seven, most of those are through June, so actually we may be a little under budget there. Most of those are through June, so actually, we may be a little under budget there. Yeah.
This would be all the town buildings, police department, where it's kind of different line.
Town board buildings, so.
Just this one.
Yeah.
This one and building department.
One for electricity, you got town hall, you got police, you've got justice court, you've got highway. Yeah, it's, it's all electricity. Braces lane, landing, Southbury Road, water pump. Missed everybody. Yeah, for some reason, historically, seniors, their electricity goes to their lines and.
It's Anne Marie City.
And that's.
Round voice is it?
It's it, right, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
And then I did the same thing with fuel and with telephone, just looking at where we were. So. That's how I came to those numbers. So since Anne Marie is here.
You go back to page.
It's page seven. Anne Marie, before we go into executive session to discuss particular employees. Was there any comments you wanted to make with respect to postage, computer software, or office miscellaneous?
Uh, well, actually, the only thing I saw that was cut was postage. Uh, and the reason I left it in the thirty five hundred is because that's pretty much what I spent. I know the current didn't show that I, I actually needed to buy postage. So I ordered, uh, this year, I decided to go with the USPS pre-stamped envelopes. Um, so I'm all set for tax bills, and the only thing I had to buy postage for was globals and. What was the other thing? The other thing was just, you know, receipts for the month of December. So I'm pretty much at thirty five hundred for my postage, because don't forget, we added the reminder notices back. Remember, we took them out and then we had a shortfall, we had a huge, you know. Deficit in the collection, and then we went back to mailing.
Two hundred bucks.
Yeah, so put it back at thirty five hundred. Yeah, I think when I was looking at this, I was only looking at July numbers.
Right.
Thought you had done your bulk of your postage and you didn't have anything else that you were ready to go for by December.
Exactly, because I need to be prepared for December for the next year coming, so.
So I didn't realize there was going to be more later.
Okay.
Okay. Since you're here, I guess maybe we'll end the regular part of the budget work session and go into executive session to discuss. Employees.
Your journey to.
Our journey until Monday. Yeah, and then once we're done with the executive session, we will end the session for those. On Zoom and YouTube. Uh, there's, yes, there's someone on Zoom, and there's probably people watching on YouTube. Yeah, so we do need to, let me just check in with Christina. Thank you.
Yeah.
And make sure that we can turn off the.
Yes, I'll shut everything off.
Okay, thank you. We made that mistake once. Never want to make it again.